Okay, welcome everybody. Welcome to the Town of New Canaan Town Council Regular Meeting for Wednesday, November 18, 2020. It is 7:02 and this is a virtual meeting. Those wishing to participate in the meeting are connecting through Zoom or you can watch it on Channel 79. The agenda, to begin, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we have two members, no, three, four. I see four members of the Girl Scouts. Please introduce yourselves and then you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You want to begin Claire? Tell us who you are. You're on mute. Let's see if we can unmute Claire. There you go.
My name is Claire.
And what grade are you in?
Fourth grade.
And what's the name of your troop?
Five.
50568.
Wow, that's a, that's a hard number to remember. And how long have you been a Girl Scout?
For two years.
And are you still having fun?
Yes.
And do you still get to meet or are you meeting virtually? And how about you Kelly? You want to unmute and tell us, tell us about yourself and Girl Scout 50? You'll have to tell me again.
Hi, my name is Lila.
Oh.
And I'm in grade four and my troop is 505 not 68. And I, we do it virtually now.
And do I see Emily?
Yeah. Hi, I'm Emily and I'm in 50568 and I'm in fourth grade.
Great. And Charlotte?
I'm Charlotte and I'm in fourth grade and my troop is 50568.
And how long have you been a scout?
Uh, five years.
Wow. I bet you're pretty good at it by now. And will the four of you be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Are you ready? All right, I brought a flag.
Take yourselves off mute.
Everyone rise and face the flag. And begin when you're ready.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. I surrender my allegiance to the Constitution and my devotion to the principle of justice for all.
Thank you. Now, would any of you like to say a few words about your troop or are you done?
Just say thank you for the opportunity to come on. And my name's Tammy Duluzin and I am the troop leader for this troop 50568. It's an East School troop. We started in kindergarten and now the girls are in fourth grade. And they're just a joy. We were meeting at the Mary B Cabin at Kiwanis Park, socially distancing, of course, up until a few weeks ago, and now we've moved to remote meetings. And there's nine of us.
And can, and girls from kindergarten to what grade?
Well, these girls, these girls started together in kindergarten, but the troop is only fourth graders, so they're nine, nine, 10 years old.
And can anybody join now or do you have to wait till a certain time of the year?
No, anybody can join.
So you're looking for more, more scouts?
We are always recruiting and actually New Canaan currently does have a bit of a shortage of Girl Scouts in the younger grades. We don't have any kindergarten troops in New Canaan Districts. So the more we can recruit at the younger ages, obviously the better off we are by the time the girls get to Saks and the high school because they naturally dwindle down as they get older. So we definitely need to help, start helping recruiting a little bit more.
Okay, we will put out the word.
Thank you very much and thanks again for having us.
They're on live TV, so no doubt we're going to have a flood of applications tomorrow.
Fantastic. We welcome them. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Girl Scouts, you can exit now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, girls.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to the roll call. Rich Townsend, would you like to take the roll?
Certainly. Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Robin Bates Mason.
Here.
Liz Donovan.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Sven England.
Here.
Mark Jmski.
Here.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Naughton.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Christina Ross. Rich Townsend.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
We have 11 of 12. You have a quorum.
Great, the meeting is called to order. And I guess the first order of business is the approval of the minutes for the October 21, 2020 Regular Meeting. Do I have a motion or any discussion on the minutes?
A motion.
Okay, Steve Carl, motion to approve. Any further discussion?
I have a comment, very quick comment. On page four, a minor correction under land use and recreation. It says Mr. Naughton reported. He wasn't at this meeting, so.
I will make that change. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That's funny.
I know, I had to think twice and, you know, I was wondering, was he here? But no, that's me.
Mr. Naughton's a busy guy. Okay, so we have a motion, we had a conversation and there being no further.
We need a second, we need a second.
I'll second it. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, it's John, Steve, Tom, Robin, Maria, Mark, Mike, Rich, Liz, Sven, Penny, and I think that's all of us.
All 11, yep.
Okay, so minutes are approved. Next, we move to public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address and comments will be limited to two or three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the Town Council? You can unmute yourself and, and say so, or you can put, identify yourself in the chat. Okay, Susan, Susan Servin, can you hear me? Susan? All right. I figured maybe she just joined because she wanted to address us. Okay, if there are no members of the public who wish to address the council, I guess we'll move on to, to the First Selectman's update. Update from First Selectman Kevin Moynihan. Go ahead, you're on mute. There you go.
Good evening, Town Council. Good to see you all, virtually. First I have on the agenda, as always, is, my agenda is COVID. You probably got a fallout in the past hour and the situation is continuing as it has for the past few weeks. We went red last Thursday on the state's statistics. According to today's paper, the state's positivity rate the last seven rolling days is 5.38%. And as I noted tonight, based upon 793 tests we've had in the past six days, five days, and we had 39 new cases since last Friday's outcall, our positivity rate is 5.63. I suspect if we did more testing than we're doing, we'd, we'd be lower than the state average, the state's positivity rate. But obviously COVID is around us. COVID is, everybody probably knows somebody who, who has tested positive. Fortunately, we've only had a couple of people that we know of in the hospital and they, they've come out of the hospital after a week's stay or so, so it's not like it was back in March and April and we hope it doesn't get, get back to that. But we do know that we're, we're going to see a lot of COVID around us. The good thing is that schools are staying open. We're one of the only districts that, where the schools are staying open, even though the high school is going to go to hybrid next week or this week. I forget what the.
This week.
And so, but we're, you know, as I've said, in the outcalls, it's very important people really get serious about not having large gatherings and abiding by the governor's rules about 10 people or less. And make sure when the college kids come home next week that they understand that they have to wear masks when downtown and certainly indoors and, so, you know, it, it sounds kind of, kind of redundant to say, make sure people wear the masks and wash their hands and maintain social distance. But that's really what's going to, what's going to control this spread this time. And we are doing testing on Friday. We had, we closed out the reservations about 700 tonight and we're, we, we didn't have the dates for next week, but we will have testing next week and we will announce that on Friday night. And we're going to continue the community testing so that we contribute, one, to the state statistics, but also to be able to identify asymptomatic people and, and control the spread by having people stay at home and not be passing the virus if we know, if they know they're positive. So that's COVID. We are, police commission in the last hour, I believe Tucker was there, I had trouble getting on, approved the outdoor dining to continue into December as other towns in Greenwich are doing. And, you know, we don't really know what's coming down the road with the governor. I think the governor's trying very hard not to have a close down and, but we'll see. Hopefully we get through Thanksgiving and move on into December and have it growing but controlled. As far as updates on capital projects, the CHP project of the Waste Bar Treatment Plan is moving forward and should be operational hopefully by February. And Saks project is moving forward for CHP. The solar was installed at East School and we're moving on to Saks and West School for, for solar. And we have authorization to proceed with solar on a few more town buildings. These are all being done with power purchase agreements, not investment in capital, but we're glad to continue to build out the solar capability in town. And then I'm working on this, I've said before, the announcement is beginning to get delayed, but I hope to announce soon a new cell tower location and a strategy. Actually, you know, as John knows so well, there's been a silver lining in COVID for us with the real estate market. But I just read recently where Verizon has indicated because of COVID, they are focusing less on New York City and focusing more on the suburbs. And because their capital investment in adding capacity, especially with 5G, is something that's been focused on the city so far, but I think it hopefully may help us to address some of the, our urgent need for better cell service by having more resources dedicated about the carriers. Tucker's been working actively on trying to figure out how to deal with optimum internet service being poor and spotty and problematic. And the, as you know, the storm in August really emphasized how much we have to improve the, both the cell service and the app, the internet service in town. We stood up a police department building committee, which will meet in early December for the, and begin to study what to do about either the South Avenue building renovation or possibly a new building, but one way or another, we have to tackle problems with the current building. And budget process has gotten underway. The Board of Finance hasn't issued final budget guidance yet, but we've begun to work with our department managers to get their budget requests and put the budget together. So that's about all I have and we have to take questions.
Go ahead, Maria.
When you say a new cell tower, that's in addition to the Richie one?
In addition to that one, yeah. Richie's in, in motion in terms of building it and they're doing the preliminary work to, hopefully that'll be up within six months and operational.
And where we, do we know where or any idea?
In the northwest. Said troubles out, up by the reservoir in the northwest corner of town. And I hope to announce a package, not just that one, but anyway, so.
A package of towers? This must not be an election year. Come on, Rich.
Hey, John. I made a promise to try to, try to solve this problem and it's not, not very popular with immediate neighbors, but I think realtors and, and I think people from August really get, get it that this is critical that we, we solve this problem, especially with all the new residents who are discovering, you know, you're working from home and you, and we've, we've got to continue to make progress.
Go ahead, Rich.
Could you comment on, on the current schedule for the library?
Yeah, they are being further delayed. They've now planned, I guess, to go to planning and zoning in December. Maybe not, but they're, we are continuing to discuss the parking situation and, but they're, they're simply delayed.
What's the status of the MOU or more importantly, Town Council representation on their board, building committee? Because we don't have any insight on their building committee or their board at this time and we don't have a copy of the MOU.
Well, nothing, you know, we're working according to their schedule and they're not on schedule, but the.
And I know we don't have to take action, but I do think that the Town Council should have a copy of the MOU so that we can begin to understand and, and, you know.
John, the MOU is, is only a draft still and there's things to be worked out. And then when you, you make clear you don't want to proceed on the library until you see what is going to be presented to planning and zoning. And I haven't seen what's going to be presented in planning and zoning yet, so.
I still would like to request the draft MOU. I know that we don't want to proceed and take action until it's ready and done, but we would like to see the draft MOU that the Board of Finance has seen. So I'm formally requesting to see what the Board of Finance already has.
Our position is, John, you know, drafts are drafts and you've seen the draft, Rich has seen the draft, but it was a draft five months ago and no draft is done until it's done. But you, you guys are going to have further input into, into the MOU. It's not, it's not going to be presented as a fait accompli.
I, I, I know, but I can tell you that, that two of us have seen it, but the 12 of, the 10 who haven't have asked and want to understand why they're not able to participate in the conversation and see the draft.
Well, you know, actually, John, nothing's been done on the MOU in four or five months since, since we last, so it, it really hasn't progressed. I say, you know, there's no great mystery to it. It's, it's a, it's more of a legal document we're ultimately going to agree upon and there'll be opportunity for you to make changes.
Okay, well, I've made my point that there are a, a good, a good number of council people who would like to see the draft and feel that, you know, they, they want to be part of at least the conversation. We can move on. Somebody into the meeting. Any other questions for Kevin?
Oh, Kevin? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
All right, sure. I just have a question about the COVID testing. This Friday is closed out, will they be more and will there be more at the same price? The $90?
It's been $90 and, you know, there is free testing available if you want to go out and wait in line in Norwalk and Stanford. We've, we're not happy the state is not providing free testing in New Canaan. They say we can perhaps ask for reimbursement on FEMA, but we haven't seen a nickel from FEMA yet and we have almost $2 million in expenses that, so it's, we're not very optimistic about the reimbursement process. So on the other hand, $90 is a relative bargain. Darian is going to stand up testing next week at $200.
$200, yeah.
And it may or may not be reimbursable by insurance. The insurance companies are beginning to deny claims for asymptomatic testing and, and this is, this is prophylactic testing, you know? Anybody who has any symptoms should go and get tested right away at Stanford Hospital or CVS stores. I mean, it's, it's available with a doctor's prescription, so, and it will, it will be covered if you have symptoms by insurance.
Okay, no, I'm Darian.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to continue the testing because it's the way to fight the, the, but I think, you know, being under 5% is, at this stage in the game, a positivity rate that is controllable. If we start seeing many, many more people go to the hospitals and we're concerned about the hospitals getting overrun, then, you know, the governor may be enforcing more drastic measures and, but in the meantime, everybody, everybody, we, we do the testing to try to monitor what's really going on in town and decide whether we need to take more drastic actions. Right now, we're, I, I had a call today with the First Selectman from Greenwich, Darian, Westport, Wilton, and everybody's sort of in a, a mode of, there's no need to take drastic action, action now, other than emphasize to people, don't gather, don't be, don't be careless and, and follow the rules. And we will get through it.
Great, thanks.
So, um, the governor probably couldn't order testing for people that, you know, just to give you, say, permission for the kids that are coming home from college. If they're not being, if, if insurance companies are not reimbursing asymptomatic testing, it would be a hardship for that to be required in any way?
Well, the governor has indicated that college kids should get tested before they come home and then again after, after they get home for a while. So I don't know, you.
I mean, just think, three kids, three tests times two, that's six tests times $100. And you don't even have symptoms. I'm, I'm just thinking.
Well, again, I, I, I can't defend what the governor's doing, so. But, you know, we're, we're doing the best to have, for those who feel more comfortable having testing, the testing is really done for the community's benefit, not for the individual, because most people are going to test negative.
We have to make a certain number of reservations. I think it's what, 500 every week? And if we don't fill those reservations, it costs the town something. Are we filling all our reservations?
That's not correct, John. We actually increased the reservations for Friday to more than 500 and the, they're working with us. They wanted us to guarantee 90%, but we're getting the, the demand. So as long as the demand's there, we're not worried about, we're not. On the other hand, we are paying for employee testing because we, there's, we self-insure and so first responders and, and teachers do get their testing paid for because it's being paid for effectively out of their insurance.
Would the town consider paying for the testing for asymptomatic? That's a big.
Not in the budget.
You know, the superintendent paid $48,000 for the testing of, of the students and teachers a week, two weeks ago Friday. We paid, we paid $31,000 for last Friday, but $21,000 was paid by residents. You know, it's a matter of, should, should we be dedicating taxpayer dollars to something that is designed to fight the virus, but also really is more for our decision-making process? If we, if we saw a lot more positivity, we'd be, we, we would be taking more drastic measures to lock people down. That's why the governor hasn't done more of a lockdown because we're only at 5%.
It would really be an unfunded mandate on residents if we have to pay for asymptomatic testing and it's required. That's.
But it's not being required by the town.
Uh. Well, no, not at this point. I'm just wondering, I guess that's the, the issue. You're balancing what you do to respond, you know, what controls you put in place versus getting out of the controls by getting tested, even if you don't have symptoms. I'm just thinking this through. This could be a, a big deal if the governor mandates any form of asymptomatic testing and people have to pay for it. Families.
I think that's a hypothetical. I don't think anybody's talking imminently about unfunded mandates.
Yeah, by the way, the, the, they are bringing up a mobile unit on Monday to the schoolhouse apartments and the Milport apartments because people on public assistance are entitled to free testing from the federally financed clinic. But if you go down to that clinic in Norwalk, I'm told it's a three or four hour wait, so.
Kevin, Kevin, did we use Murphy Medical Associates?
We used Murphy Medical briefly and we began to hear about his, the rate he was charging and we, we decided not to use them anymore.
Great.
I'm sorry, on the first responders, do the volunteer first responders, does the town pay for their testing?
Yes.
Are you going to tell us about the new bike lane or is that Tiger? I read about a bike lane.
Well, we're applying for a grant with, along with Darian. And there's some kind of program that is, is, I don't know whether we'll get the grant Tiger. Probably can't give any better odds than I can. If we get the grant, we're going to put some charos on the road and it's mainly in Darian to, to go to the, to go to the beach or at least have interconnectivity between Darian and New Canaan, have them come to Waybitty Park. But it's the thing to do.
And it would be down South Avenue? That's the plan?
Yes. There's actually two, two spurs of the route, yeah.
South Avenue and what else?
We, I'd be happy to share the app, grant application with you. That has all the details.
Mike, you had any questions?
No, I asked a five. Thank you.
All right, I guess if we're all done with questions, we can move on to the labor agreement. Okay. This would be Cheryl Jones and it's, uh, we need to vote to approve a labor agreement with the New Canaan Town Hall Employees Union Local 1303-465 of Council Four, American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees for the three years ending June 30, 2023. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Thank you. I am happy to be here tonight to present the Town Hall Union Contract. I have attorney Chris Hudson also with me tonight. As you see in the tentative agreement, we have made some significant changes in the health plan. We are seeing health savings. The wages are 2% across the board for three years. We are seeing an increase in pension contributions, a decrease in the retiree health and put some rules in regard, regarding workers' comp. I do believe it's a good contract for the town and a good contract for the Town Hall Union employees and I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
So just to repeat what you just said, the wages go up 2% a year for three years.
Correct.
The town's pension costs will rise slightly and our health costs will decrease slightly.
In regard, in regards to the pension, the employees' contribution towards the pension will increase. So they will go from 3% to 3.5%.
Okay, the employees' contribution will increase and the employees' contribution toward their health will decrease?
No, that will also increase.
Okay. Any questions from anyone else?
Cheryl, maybe for the benefit of the public, it'd be good to know how many unit members there are and how many are participating, you know, in the medical, just kind of run through that, I think would be helpful.
Okay, we have 28 members in the union. Right now, the benefits, we have two benefit plans, a PPO and an HSA, and we have 85% in the HSA and the other percent in the PPO. We do have 14 of the 28 in the pension plan. The other 14 are in the defined contribution plan because we have shut the pension plan to that union.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, so the workers are happy with it, you're happy with it.
Correct.
Linda's happy with it. Kevin? Why wouldn't we be happy with it?
I'm happy with it. Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Sven. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, Mike. All, any further discussion?
Is Chris Hudson still, is Chris still on the call?
Yeah.
Chris, I just want, I just want to thank you for everything you did to put this deal together. You've been, you've been in the town's corner for years, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you and all credit to Cheryl too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chris. The public didn't get to see, they didn't get to hear from you, but you were the one who briefed us and explained it to us, which is why this meeting is going so smoothly. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Hey, John, are you, are you going to approve or voting not to reject?
We're voting to approve.
Is that what the resolution says?
Yes, to approve a labor agreement. Yes, to approve a labor agreement. That's what it says. That's what I read. That's what it says, to approve a labor agreement. All in favor? Raise your hand. Okay, Robin, John, Steve, Tom, Maria, Mark, Mike, Liz, Rich, Penny, Sven. So that's 11 yes. What? Nope. Okay, 11 yes. Uh, it's unanimous. It, it's approved. Uh, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Board of Finance, to confirm the following appointment and reappointment to the Board of Finance in accordance with Town Charter C5-2. Neither of those members are here, but these are reappointments, so we know them. Uh, do I have a motion to reappoint Neil Budnick as a regular member for a four-year term ending November 15, 2024?
I'll make that motion, Penny.
Okay, Penny makes a motion. A fan of Neil Budnick. Good.
I am, have been for years.
Oh, Sven is a fan of Neil Budnick. Any discussion? Okay. Favor, raise your hand. Um, and I see 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. It is, uh, 11, uh, to nothing. It's approved. Neil is reappointed. We also have, uh, do I have a motion to appoint Christian LeBrie as a regular member for a four-year term ending November 15, 2024? Tom Butterworth, seconded by Steve Carl. Any discussion? Robin, you had a comment or did you want to just a second? Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, does somebody want to say something nice about Chris LeBrie?
I, that, both of these guys are, these are, these are two of New Canaan's finest. So, uh, you know, if, if this wouldn't, if this wasn't unanimous, I'd be very surprised. I'm not trying to swing votes here, but, uh, both of these guys have put in an amazing amount of work and time into the town's finances and, uh, the town's very lucky to have them both.
And there will be, and we don't need to do any court packing after these two appointments?
No, these guys work, these guys work with everybody.
Okay, all in favor? I count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. Unanimous 11, nothing. Christian LeBrie is appointed as a regular member for a four-year term ending November 15, 2024. All right, congratulations, gentlemen. And, uh, next we move on to committee assignments, review and approval of Town Council Committee Assignments. And I think I can pull that up on my screen here and share it with all of you. Yep. Can you all see it? Yeah. There they are. And now the people on TV can see it too. Okay. Are there any comments on the Town Council Committee Assignments? I think, tell, tell me if I'm wrong, Tucker, but I'd think we made no changes. Is that correct?
No, this is, I think you're deciding if you want to make any changes. This is how it exists currently.
Right.
You want to make any changes.
So did anybody want to change from where they are to, I mean, we had no, we had no elections, so we have no new members of the Town Council. So, this is just a formality to ask anybody if they're interested in moving from one committee to another.
And you don't have to do it right here and now. If somebody wants to reach out to you and do it at the December meeting, you can do that as well.
Right. This is also probably the only time that the public actually gets to see this all at once and see how we not only fill all of our committees and we have, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7 of them, but we also have liaisons on the Board of Finance on the, in the right-hand column, uh, where we work with education, finance, library, infrastructure and land use. Oh, and public safety. All right, so there's, uh, no comments on this? You want to go through them?
No.
No?
I just had one comment. Just wondering why land use, recreation, park, conservation, not ever split out in any way, like land use by itself. It just seems like it's, land uses a lot. Or was it always combined? Just a, just a question.
I'm going to turn to Penny for that, but I believe that when we tried to make conservation recently, I tried to, you know, uh, I had the bright idea of making conservation its own committee. I think it was Penny who reminded me that these committees are set in our charter and, uh, and therefore.
No, 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 they're not, they're not established in the charter. They're established in the Town Council rules.
Okay. So we have to change our rules and how often, when, and we change our rules, what, we, we look at them, dust them off and reevaluate our rules every five years?
Yeah. Yeah, we did it a couple of years ago.
But conservation, I think, was originally under land use, recreation and conservation, wasn't it, Penny?
Yeah, it's in the description.
Yeah. Right.
Was.
We, we had, we had talked about separating it out, but, uh, I think the discussion ended up that we were going to leave it under land use, recreation, park and recreation committee. Um, and then let the committee divide up responsibilities as to what sections who was going to, you know, cover. It's a pretty 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. You know, seven members on the committee.
So we have a mix of Republican and Democrat on each committee. We have, uh, a mix of leadership from both parties. And I think everybody is on at least two committees, so.
I think just doing it, uh, you know, being on the Town Council for a year and then on that committee, there's so many meetings attached to land use, uh, like planning, zoning and, um, then parks and recs and inlands and what, it's hard to know which meetings as a subcommittee member I should pay most attention to. And I, I don't know if that's just because I'm new at this or if there really are a lot of things that fall under that, that committee.
That's why I thought that it was going to be divided within the committee as to who was covering which area.
Well, that's probably a good idea. We'll have to talk to the chairs.
Yeah, right. I also wonder why public safety isn't a larger committee, John.
Meaning more people on it?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, um, hang on, I have five people in your, uh, what, fireplace EMS?
Well, Liz and Mike are on the call. If you guys want to recruit a few more people and if more, and, and if a few people want to volunteer to, to be added to that committee, by, by all means.
Yeah. Always have more people, um, but it's up to anybody's, you know, interest. Absolutely. We'll take whoever we can get.
Okay, I'm going to hit stop share. So if there's no further discussion, those are the committee assignments. I don't think we need a motion or a vote or anything. Those will just be it unless somebody contacts, uh, the chair, uh, or a sub, a subcommittee head and asks, uh, for another assignment. Okay, so the next thing I should, uh, make sure that we make this public is the calendar. Let me see if I can do that. Boom.
Yeah, you got finance.
Financial update.
Do I have to do financial update?
Yeah, that's the next item on it.
Oh. Okay. Stop sharing. Okay, number eight on our agenda, financial update, an update of recent financial results. 10 minutes, Linda Asmani. Actually, you can take as much time as you want.
Uh, actually, I don't need as much time as you've allotted. A brief update, I'm updating the, the report as I shared with the Board of Finance, uh, two things I just wanted to bring, to update you on. Uh, the first thing are the, um, submissions that we've done to FEMA and CARES for COVID-related expenses, and you have those charts in front of you. And so these are for March through June. Uh, we've submitted a total of 471,000 in reimbursements and we're waiting to, um, to hear back from FEMA and the state and, and CARES, which is managed through OPM. Uh, these are what we've went through and we feel are eligible expenses. Uh, once FEMA goes through them and CARES goes through them, they'll either agree with us and reimburse the, the amounts that we've submitted or they'll let us know if there's, um, if there are any variances to what we deem as, as reimbursable or not. So we're still waiting to hear on those. As you recall, these are last fiscal year's expenses and therefore any reimbursements that we get will go into this year's, uh, funds. So these were not budgeted revenues in this year's. And likewise, last year, we had unbudgeted expenses. And therefore these revenues would go into, into this year and these are for the period that ended, um, June 30th. And the next are just year-to-date financials, uh, which so far this year, keeping with the COVID theme, we have about $335,000 in COVID-related expenses in this fiscal year. So we are now also working on getting those, on the town side, we're working on getting those submitted, um, and sent into FEMA and CARES through the programs. As you recall, um, you approved, um, almost $2 million, an initial $400,000 for the Board of Ed last year and an additional 1.5 this year. Uh, we had a audit committee meeting this morning, um, and the Board of Ed reported that they've actually spent the 1.9, so that will be on the list of items that we'll be submitting, uh, for reimbursement. So we have about $2 million on the Board of Ed side and about $400,000 on the town side just through, um, through October of this year that we'll be submitting for reimbursement. And again, all those revenues, once we do get in, those will go into this fiscal year, uh, funds. So those will be additional revenues that we had not budgeted, uh, for the year and will hopefully offset these unbudgeted expenses that, that we've incurred this year. So we should, uh, be close to a wash there. Um, other than that, all the other revenues are trending as we, and we anticipate them to trend. Tax collections, as I've shared, uh, before is, is trending as, as we anticipate. Prior year taxes are actually ahead of what we budgeted. We budgeted typically 250,000 year-to-date. We're already at 367. Uh, conveyance fees, as I've shared before, we had a budget of $1 million at the beginning of the year. Year-to-date, we're at 972,000 in conveyance fee revenues. So, John, keep up the good work. Uh, but, uh, that's trending well. Um, on the flip side, um, as you're aware, we did a wave parking, parking is in the commuter lots, uh, which is the biggest driver of the parking revenues. And so that revenue is not, is not coming in and we anticipate possibly revisiting that in January, but we definitely anticipate that we'll see a, a reduction in what we budgeted for parking revenues. But I believe these positive variances of the other areas will offset, um, the shortfalls that we anticipate to, to happen from parking revenues. Uh, and if we do indeed receive the reimbursements from FEMA, uh, we should be, uh, we should be whole in overall revenue picture at the end of the year. The spending patterns are, are consistent with where we would be this period any other year, uh, with the exception, obviously, of the COVID expenses that I just, uh, referenced to. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you have. Oh, by way of financial update, we did, um, we have completed the audit for the fiscal year that just ended. There was a draft presentation to the Audit Committee this morning. Uh, we will go back to the Audit Committee on December 3rd, I believe, for the final presentation of the audit and then it will come to you at your next meeting for approval, um, of the audit. But just as an update, there were no, um, no material deficiencies. Um, everything was, had been consistent with prior years. So our internal controls are good and they're in place. Our fund balance did increases I reported before by about a million dollars or so. But, um, all in all, it was a very good audit report that was presented to the Audit Committee and you will get to, to hear from the auditors, um, next month, um, at your meeting and that's all I have.
The FEMA and CARES money, the 400, the money we're submitting for reimbursement and the 2 million that the schools are submitting for reimbursement. FEMA, I understand, is federal money. Is CARES Connecticut money or is that also federal?
It's federal managed by the state.
And are the 170 towns across Connecticut all submitting all at the same time and, and those decisions are all being made at once? Or is it a rolling where they're constantly evaluating applications, making decisions throughout the year?
Ideally, they're supposed to be making decisions throughout the year. Uh, they do have submission deadlines, like the last CARES was October 31st. In my discussion with most of the towns, most of them turned in about that timeframe just because gathering all the information and trying to get as much, as many receipts possible for the reimbursement to, to maximize on that initial round. But so far, from what I've heard and maybe Kevin, you've heard from other first selectmen, I don't know of any municipality that has received either FEMA or CARES funds yet. Uh, there are smaller pockets of funds that we've received. Uh, we've seen about 30,000 through the Department of Health, uh, for testing. Um, and we recently hired a nurse and that is going to pay for those salaries, so we received that. But the big chunk of these, um, we have not yet received.
And, and the, uh, federal government sent a, sent funds to, uh, the state back in April for 1.4 billion dollars. I think they're required to give 15% of that to municipalities. But unlike Massachusetts, which immediately gave money to municipalities, Connecticut is hoarding it until they're going to decide what to give us, so. And they also are making us jump, uh, both Fairfield County and Hartford County, the only two counties that disaster was declared for, for COVID. So they want us to jump through the FEMA who first and get 75% reimbursement, uh, of, and then they will possibly reimburse the other 25%. So it's been very disappointing to municipalities as to how they're handling it at state level.
What's the worst case, uh, on timing? I, I mean, I know that we can't tell whether they'll reimburse us or not, but how long could it possibly take for them to make a decision? And I understand when you have 170 municipalities all filing at the same time, like, like counting ballots, it takes some time to get, make their way through all that paperwork. But are we talking about six months or longer?
Well, the, the, you know, for Q3 and 4, which we submitted and, and when do we make this mission for?
Uh, October, end of October, two, about two, three weeks ago.
No, 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 for, for the Q3 and 4 of last year.
Oh. That was early. I want to say maybe it was mid-July or mid-August.
Yeah, and, and then all the states, uh, all the municipalities aggregated about $40 million. Our share was 600 or 400, 600 at the time.
600, yeah.
Down in the Board of Ed, so that the pot was $40 million. And nobody's gotten any of that reimbursed yet. We filed in July, so.
And then the. I'm wondering what the risk is that we'll be in the spring, ready to sign a budget and we still won't know about $2 million worth of reimbursement on the school side and what's trending to be another million dollars on the town side. And we won't know, right? We won't know whether it's a hole in our budget that we have to fill or that they're filling.
Well, the federal funds, the 1.4 billion has to be either spent or committed by December 31. Uh, so, and then FEMA, FEMA is, is in addition because Fairfield County is eligible for FEMA reimbursement. They're trying to maximize federal dollars. But like, I'd like to more certainly, we're going to get it, so.
Okay, you answered my question. Thanks. We'll know something in December. Any other questions? Must have been a great presentation, Linda. Thank you. Linda, um, when are we going, when do we expect, uh, the, the Board of Finance to issue guidance? Remind us all what the schedule of the budget season looks like.
They're, they're working on their letter that they issue. Um, we had a meeting this evening with the, with the Board of Ed because they're, we're getting their input as well going into that. Um, I believe it's going to be presented at their December meeting. But on the town side, um, we're not wait, we can't wait until December to get all the departments to start putting their budget. So we've actually started the process of asking departments to start putting their cap, their. Of asking departments to start putting their cap, their writing budgets together, capital budgets. And so forth. And then once the guidance comes out, we'll meet with the departments and see. Where where what what the variance is between those. But their guidance should be coming out at their December meeting.
And when will we have Kevin volunteered to put together the joint meeting after the elections? Kevin, do you have any idea when we can put that together? Since you've got, you've got all twelve of us here, we could start putting some dates on the calendar.
Kevin thought about it, John.
It'll be easier this year because it'll have to be virtual. Now that I know you're focused on COVID and you should be. But we could have a virtual meeting and get all the boards together in a in a virtual, you know.
Actually Tucker, Tucker, why don't you um talk to the board chairs and see if we can get this organized?
Okay, I'll do it.
All right. I love that. Okay. Any other questions about the budget? Tom, you're you're smiling up there.
I just love the way Kevin found somebody to delegate to. That was very smooth.
Not my meeting, it's.
Okay, uh if there's nothing, no further questions of Linda, then we'll move on to item number nine, meeting schedule. Let's see, meeting schedule. I don't think there's any surprises.
Very straightforward.
Yep, there it is on your screen on the TV set. All right, so. They're all seven o'clock regular meetings. There's no August meeting and the budget.
The only change is that it says that the meetings will be at Town Hall. We don't know the location yet.
Okay. That's a change?
We don't know. I mean, that's for January. So right now, we're we're hoping we'll be back in Town Hall. But if COVID is still doing its thing, then they'll be as they are tonight.
Okay.
Okay, I actually actually have a question, John. It's Penny. In last year's calendar, we had. Designations of when public hearings were going to be held on the various components of the budget. Education, finance, building and infrastructure. And they, because this calendar, when we are announcing. Or scheduling meetings, it has to be established and sent to the state by the end of December. So. If we don't schedule them now, they then become special meetings. So was there, I I know COVID is putting, you know. Kind of different color on how we can can schedule things, but are we not having public hearings on these various parts of the budget? Are we not meeting with, you know, having meetings with the Board of Finance? So we're not duplicating. Department heads.
So Tom Stadler put this together, which he does every year. And I'm not sure why, if there's something different here than there has been in years past, I can certainly ask him and we can get this back to you.
Okay, because what was scheduled, as I said, what was established last year is. A whole long list of meetings that are labeled public hearings.
Okay.
But as I recall, that came after this, right, that.
Nope, nope. It's dated the fourteenth of November nineteen. And it then went to the state as duly scheduled meetings.
Fourteen November?
Yep. I'm I'm looking at it right here in my notebook.
All right, I'm I'm looking to see if I can find a copy to share with.
We we approved it on the thirteenth.
I think that's a separate list that Tom used to call the budget schedule, right? Does it say budget schedule at the top of it, Penny?
No, it does not. It says Town Council twenty twenty meeting schedule.
So the meet, so you're talking about all those meetings are integrated into our regular meeting like this, so they're missing this?
Yeah, you take that off, I can show you in my schedule, John.
I, well, okay.
You can.
Yeah, that's not going to work. All right, sorry.
I do.
There we go. No, it's not going to come up. Sorry.
I'll have it in my hand.
We also agreed that we weren't going to listen to certain departments and we were going to have the subcommittees go to them. I I also feel like that was a. Something we discussed where we didn't need them to duplicate what they were presenting to the Board of Finance and we were going to.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm wrong. I'm just trying to remember.
No, that was, that was, Mark, you're you're right. That was the way we tried to operate last year. We asked everybody to attend the the department. Presentations to the Board of Finance and then we tried to open up the our meetings for our questions. On the specific, on the specific, you know, the board or the town. So we tried to, we tried to eliminate one, one presentation by the, by the, the funding units to us.
So this is the, I think this is the document you're talking about?
No, it's not. The document I'm talking about is the Town Council meeting schedule, not.
Okay.
But I I guess my only question is, are we going to schedule public hearings on the various components of the budget?
I believe we are. I believe that it's important to have.
No, 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 pardon me. You know what these public hearings are? This is when we decided we were going to have more opportunity for the public to meet with us. To discuss what's going on in departments. Has nothing to do with budget. Remember, we, and it really kind of fizzled. Because nobody came, nobody came to the first two that we had scheduled.
Right.
Yeah. So, okay, I I gather because it didn't work out. As an, you know, invitation to the public to come meet with us, that we've disbanded that idea. Okay, sorry.
But we are going to have more meetings than you see on this schedule. This is the first pass. This is our regular meetings. We're going to publish this. To the state and everyone. And you're right, all all of the other meetings will be known as special meetings.
Yeah.
And we will have probably special meetings around the Board of Education budget and some of the other department budgets. Tucker has a copy of last year's and she'll circulate a new one based on last year's, right?
Well, uh circulate a new, you're not, I think I just heard that you're not going to host those. Are you talking?
Special meetings.
But just budget meetings. You're going to add the budget meetings to this calendar.
Right.
Right. That's what we need to do. Okay.
Let me, let me speak up for Christina because she's not here. And memory doesn't work in my favor very well right now, but I believe she, her reaction to this. Effort to streamline and and have us attend Board of Finance meetings as opposed to having our own. She found frustrating and inadequate. So I, all I'm suggesting is that we let her speak to that at our next meeting. Hear her out on what what the basis of her concern might be.
I think the concern is that in the presentation, the Board of, watching the Board of Finance. They're able to ask the questions, but sitting in the back of the room last year with Rich and folks. You know, we weren't able to ask those questions. At that time, we had to wait until we got around to the. To the regular Town Council meetings.
I I hear you saying that we should have our own. I agree with that. I actually think that Zoom allows us to run. Some very efficient meetings where, as Sven points out, we can ask our own questions. They don't have to be long meetings. So I think going back to having our own budget meetings where we get to ask questions of the various departments is a good idea. And I think a majority of the council would like that opportunity. And so speak up if if directionally that's wrong, but I think we would like to schedule our own meetings.
John, I would, I would comment on it, but I I think you're probably right that that I don't think that. Changing the way we dealt with the meetings last year versus the year before actually saved any time and I think it frustrated some of the council. So I. I I think going back to the other format is probably a good idea.
Okay. So no further comments on the schedule. I think we have, we have a plan. That brings us to number ten on our agenda, committee reports. We'll start with a. Bylaws and ordinance committee report, Mark and Steve Carl.
Nothing at this point. We have, we've been approached on a couple of different topics, but we haven't really met yet. On either, either of the topics that are that are out there at the moment. One of, one of the things that. I was approached on had to do with the use of parks and privacy issues in some of this, some of the language that's written in. In some of our older ordinances. So we'll probably have to dust those off and and take a look at that. That's, that's really about it. Mark, you got it?
Okay. And just to clarify, just a point of clarification, people look to the Town Council and they talk to us about. Mandates and rules, you know, related to COVID. And I just want to point out that the Town Council is. Not passing ordinances related to COVID. All of what we see happening is by executive order. The governor has the authority to issue executive orders and that's where a lot of these rules are coming from. And the Town Council doesn't really have an app, have have the power or the appetite to. Make up a whole bunch, to get in the business of executive orders, you know, surround, related to COVID. So and I think there's some confusion because I've gotten emails and I bet some of you have as well saying, you know, this is, this is outrageous and. You know, what are we going to do about this? And and I think there's a feeling maybe that the Town Council should be doing something. But I don't, but you know, that that's why we're not doing anything. That that the, this is, these, this is not. The realm of ordinance writing, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, you're in an emergency situation and the the governor is dictating most of what goes on. And I think. The First Selectman's Office has done a great job interpreting the the orders and trying to get as much information as possible. You know, including things like the signage that's been put up. And there's a lot of really good things that we've done in town to try to. To make people more aware of wearing masks and social distancing and washing hands and the alcohols have been coming. But. You know, as far as the rules go, those are coming from a higher authority than we are. So you're right, John.
Hopefully, we'll be able to put those signs up in the historical society.
Amen, baby. I want to see your pretty face, Sven, in person.
Okay. Hey, I haven't seen you since we were picking up after the election.
That's right.
All right, let's go to conservation. Robin and Rich, conservation.
Well, they didn't have a meeting, they didn't have forum, so they just had a discussion, so nothing to report.
But we were thinking about putting something on the, on our agenda tonight from the Conservation Committee on tax, a tax change, right? Was that?
I believe we're going to be putting that on. Correct? Yeah.
Yeah, we said we defer to December.
Why don't you tell everybody who's watching on channel seventy-nine what it is we're talking about? What are, what are we delaying till December?
The state in the, in the Connecticut state statutes, there's a, what is allowed is a tax abatement for land conservancies. Land conservation trusts, like, sorry, I was going to say the wrong word.
The New Canaan Land Trust.
So should someone donate and Rich probably correct me on this, but if someone should donate land, the land trust, what they've had to do. Is they've had to pay the taxes on it, the real estate taxes up to the. Acquisition period to the end of the year. And I believe land trust has paid. Fifty-six thousand dollars in any donations. And then basically what they have to do, if someone's donating land, they have to say thank you. Can you now give us this money so we can pay the real estate taxes till the end of the year? So what Connecticut allows is for nonprofit land conservation organizations to abate that. However, the tax assessor needed the town attorney to look at it to make sure it was correct. So that took a little bit of time. So it will be on the next agenda. And the Conservation Commission, I believe, on their next agenda is going to put forth a motion to support it. But they just didn't have a quorum. So I believe we'll be at their December meeting.
And I just asked you to to brief us because if anybody is interested in that topic. You have a month to go find out what the tax assessor thinks and what the Conservation Commission thinks and, you know, to. To go do the research. It's not, it's not so cut and dry. There are different legal opinions on whether it's allowed. And so we've got to figure out, we we got to wade through those legal opinions. Okay.
I'd add that Robin has also gotten us through a bronze level on sustainable CT. And we've got food scraps running at the, at the transfer station. And we've got to have a crosswalk for the Green Links at Owen Oak between the Nature Center and Saint Marks. Kudos.
Awesome. Thank you, Robin.
Are we talking about it, building a new salt shed? And if we do, does that free up some space? At the transfer station for some of these, what I'll call conservation initiatives like the swap shop?
I don't know if Tiger's on, but the, a new salt shed would be five hundred thousand dollars. I think he's had it, a request to put in the budget for the last ten years, he said at the selection meeting. It keeps on getting put off. The issue with the salt shed and is Tiger on here? Because probably not.
I just wondered whether it freed up space for the things like the swap shop that are squarely in your, your committees.
So it does free up space, but Tiger has, because they've moved the scale house, they put in it, they're putting in a new scale house currently. That does free up some space on the side where Tiger has worked out. We had a meeting with the Conservation Commission. We walked the transfer station where we could put a swap shop. But yeah, no, I think if the the salt, if if the town had a proper salt shed, it would definitely help with more than just a swap shop. Just other things you can use in the old incinerator. But it is five hundred thousand dollars for a new one.
Okay. Education, Tom Butterworth and Maria Norton.
Maria?
They had a meeting, the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed had a meeting today at four where they were talking about. It was just a preliminary discussion going into the budget about the process. And one thing that did come up. Joanne was saying, you know, we were talking about how the different boards hear the presentation, then we all ask questions. And there's so much time they put into answering the questions and it's a very time-consuming process. And, you know, I think they were trying to get to the point that it's too time-consuming really. But I think this process was set up by the Board of Ed originally. But they decided to have some preliminary budget building meetings at the Board of Ed. And they were going to invite some Board of Finance members to come just to understand what's going in to the budget. The Board of Ed presents their budget or the administration presents the budget to the Board of Ed in December. That's where they have that three-hour workshop, but there's no dollars attached to the, the ideas at that workshop. I don't think the actual budget money values come out in a couple of weeks after that. So, so the Board of Finance will get together with them so they can understand and possibly answer some of the questions upfront. Which makes sense. So I don't know if the Town Council wants to be part of that. I don't know if we were invited. But, you know, they were discussing that they would have those kind of meetings going into the budget.
But as the committee heads, if you're interested in attending those meetings, I would imagine you would let them know. Just say, you know, I'm I'm interested or I'm not interested in, or I want my own meetings, you know, but you should let them know. You should take the initiative. You know, it's, it's. If you think that's a good idea. Speak up.
Yeah, I mean, I think any information upfront is helpful. I think some of the frustration is. When we get the budget, some of the amounts are more rolled up than than you could, you can't really tell what's behind the number. So you have to ask questions to find out. So, you know, I don't know if other towns, I think some other towns do have more of a line item type. Budget, so you can actually open the book and see. budget. So you can actually open the book and see what the, the bottom number is made up of. So I don't know. It probably would be helpful to go in advance and sort of see what's going into things.
Is a very good point. I think that they would benefit from hearing your, your questions, our questions earlier than later. Because otherwise we ask many questions at the end and it's, you know, it's, it's hard to unpack. If they knew those questions were coming early on, they could have more time to think about it and break out those numbers or not.
Yeah. I think that was our point last year, right? We were going to attend the board of finance.
Workshop.
Yeah, the presentation and have our questions ready by the time they came to the town council.
Yeah, I'm remembering years, you know, three, four, five years ago, asking questions at the end. And they're like, we don't break out those numbers that way. And that was kind of the end of that. And I mean, it's unfortunate because, you know, it's too late to do anything about it. Good point. If there's nothing, anything from you, Tom, on education?
I just, that, that was great, Maria. Thank you. I, I just wanted to repeat as I always said earlier, just right before the meeting started that the schools are doing a magnificent job. As a matter of fact, Jacomo Landa, you probably saw it, did an analysis and we have had more in school time, or to put it on the converse, fewer, fewer outages, fewer shutdowns than anybody, any school district in the state. I mean, we've done a fabulous job keeping the doors open. And only recently have had to go to hybrid for the high school just this week. But the, this is not easy. I just want to stress, this is what they're having to go through with teachers juggling the people that are in the classroom, that are not in the classroom, they can't get, they can't get as close to the kids as they would. So they have to kind of re-engineer their teaching styles. It's very frustrating and everybody would be glad if 2020 would get the hell over with, right? And get back to normal.
Okay, next, finance and government.
One more thing before we leave the board of ed. Katrina Parkin was reelected as chairman and she's done an amazing job and she deserves a little shout out. When you're elected a chair under these circumstances, you're doing quadruple duty. So Katrina's just an outstanding rep for the board of ed. So thank you, Katrina.
Finance and government, Mark and Rich.
I think I have this today. I'm sorry if I'm a bit redundant with what Maria just said and also what London was talking about earlier, but in terms of the board of finance guidance, given the stress that COVID's placing on departments, they're a few weeks behind. So they're, they're looking at, at December to give more crisp guidance around the operating budget and tax funded capital. As Maria pointed out, the, the board of ed meeting occurred today and that was done. So there was a bit more collaboration beforehand as opposed to the board of finance just throwing a number, I think it's tossed it over the wall and then having a back and forth. So I commend them. I think more collaboration is always great. Todd did point out that in the guidance, there are going to be the same principles that we discussed and highlighted last year, which are that we're going to maintain a top notch school system, a vibrant downtown state community. And, and we're going to do it in a fiscally appropriate manner. So that, that was, you know, the general comments made regarding guidance. Todd also during the board of finance meeting mentioned a couple important statistics that, that, you know, first off, the town is in great shape. Debt balance at $100 million and it's the lowest it's been. And it represents roughly 4% town income. And if I heard him correctly, it's roughly 1.2% of town assets. And finally, in terms of the general fund, you know, where your guidance is tends to be, you know, we want to stick between 15 and 18%. And we're just north of that even after the $4.5 million that we gave back to the town last year, or the taxpayers last year. So that, that, that's great. And I also commend them on that. And maybe just finally on a, on a personal note. And it was sort of brought up during the board of finance meeting around interest rates, you know, my, my personal view in, in my professional experience is that, you know, we're going to be borrowing money cheap, cheap price for, for, for a lot longer than we probably are used to. And then also having spent a fair amount of time in the last couple of the past weeks with companies that I deal with, a lot of the CEOs of some manual, large Fortune 500 manufacturing companies, you know, my sense of of everything that's going on, especially this is more a comment around COVID is that, you know, while the, the virus is popping back up and, and certain parts of our economy shut down, I, I do think a lot of these manufacturing companies are able to deal with it and any spikes are not going to shut down plants. And I do think, you know, there's not going to be a run on anything. Or not, or we won't be shutting a lot of the economy down. So, you know, I, I think we need to be a little bit more optimistic as, as, as cases spike in certain states. So I think I'll leave it there and Rich may toss it to you if you have anything to add.
You, you covered an awful lot of it, Mark. I think that
You're very faint. You're very faint.
Oh, is that right? I wonder, I wonder why. Is that better?
No.
A little bit.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll just talk about her. How's that? Mark, I think Mark covered, covered most of it. I would just comment that the board of finance is spending a lot of time worrying about the budget letter. And it's, it's going to be a very hard budget season, given COVID and all of the different, the different impacts and, and trends that we're going to have to deal with. It's just going to be hard to project what we're going to need. And we're going to have to figure out how to deal with that. So we're going to have to be patient.
Yeah. I couldn't agree more with that statement.
If you couldn't hear Rich because of the audio, you pretty much said it's going to be harder to predict this year. There's just a lot more volatility. Okay, with, with that, health and human services, Liz and Penny.
Just quickly, as they have been during our health and human services, folks are amazing. And are working really hard to do everything they can to keep all the various demographics in our town safe and sane. They are looking for some more volunteers to continue helping seniors shop. That was an effort that was started in the spring and some people are still shopping for the same seniors. Some people, some volunteers can't do it right now. So there is, they're trying to beef up their, their volunteer list. So if you know of anybody who might be interested in helping out with that effort, certainly reach out to Health and Human Services, to Bethany Zero. And also one thing that came out, just so everybody knows to spread to their networks. They, there's an arrangement with Instacart now where as a senior, you can place your orders by phone. You don't have to go online to do it, which, you know, can be kind of a stumbling block for a lot of folks who are not tech savvy. So there is the option to set up your shopping by telephone as compared to doing it on your computer or smartphone. Penny, anything on your end?
Yeah, I just, I had sent to everybody a copy of the flyer that the Health and Human Services Department has just developed. They have sent it out to, gee, it's almost a good over 30 people who represent organizations that are dealing with seniors in some capacity and encouraging them to distribute this flyer to people who are in their database. And what it really is, is just trying to get everybody on the same page that, you know, this is, there it is. Thank you. We're, we're in a heightened awareness stage here that everybody had mostly likely over the summer relaxed their protections being out in, in groups and so forth. But for the seniors in particular, who a lot of whom have commorbidities, it, it's time to try to stay at home as much as you can. But that there are, there's help available for them just to pick up the phone and, and call. So they're, they're really trying to make sure that, you know, our seniors are protected and, and get the kind of services they, they might need.
Thank you. Anything else, Liz? Okay. So the need is more drivers, right? And we should call Health and Human Services or staying put.
More shoppers actually as compared to drivers, but they don't need rides. Someone's actually do the grocery shopping and bring it back to the seniors.
Right. Okay. Infrastructure and utilities, Penny.
I think Christina's not on, but Kevin really gave the update on really everything that's going on in, in that arena.
Okay. Well, and in combination, I don't know whether infrastructure talks about it or land use talks about it, but the skate, somebody should tell us about the skating rink and whether the town council actually has to approve. Or is that entirely a Parks and Rec decision? So with that, Robin and Maria, land use and recreation.
Well, we haven't met, but the recreation, the Parks and Rec, they voted seven to one to put in, allow Waven, let's say, sorry, Waveny Conservancy to put in three dog bag receptacles around the trails. They'll pay for it for six months and they're collecting data. They're not putting out the bags, just the bins. Cause that's a problem there. Bill Flynn did an excellent presentation about long-term plans at the nature center to restore the habitats. He has that report out. So if anyone's interested in it, reach out to Bill Flynn, the executive director of nature center. That's about it. Their island at Need Park, they're putting in some pollinator plants, not perennials this time, the shrubs without actually crosswalk in the parking lot is going in as well at Need Park by the baseball fields and then by the apple cart. There were some improvements done at Spencer Run. And that was about it. I don't know, Sven, you were on that. Was there anything you could add?
I just doubled down on Bill Flynn's report. It's a land management report for what they're going to do at the nature center over the course of five, maybe 10 years, you know? If you have property and you're interested in supporting native species and getting rid of invasives, take this and use it as your plan because it's universally applicable to New England.
Where do I get a copy?
Bill said he was going to put it up on the website. I can forward you a copy.
Okay. I mean, I'm on a quarter acre, but I want to do my part.
Pollinator pathway, buddy. It's good enough.
Could you just send that out to the town council?
You want me to blast it to everybody?
Unless anybody objects.
Yes.
Okay. TC distribution it is.
There you go.
So back to the skating rink, I think, I, you know, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't think that we have a hand in this. It, it's a temporary skating rink. And, and it's probably the entirely the decision of Parks and Rec, what they do in their parks, right? It's a park use in parks. So they can pick which park they want to put a skating rink in and run their tests. And since it's not a change of use and it's not requiring town dollars, not really a matter for the town council. Am I right?
I'm not so sure about that, John.
Okay, let's
Well, I mean, think about it. I mean, if they're putting structures on town land, don't we get involved in that?
As far as I know, we're talking about trailers for bathrooms, trailers for skate rental, no permanent structures. So, and if they, if they have permanent structures, they're probably, you know, they'll, they'll cost money and they'll have, they'll have to get the whole process.
All right. Well, we should, we should look at it, but I think it's a dynamite idea.
Yeah. I, I think, I think the folks that are behind the moving this rink along are going to want a chance to get in front of the council, even if they're not asking for approvals, they're going to want to get in front of the council, get the support of the council, talk about the plan, talk about what's going on, make the public that much more aware of it. So I would expect that once a plan is in place, that we'd hear from them. You know, I really believe that we'll hear from them. So that would be my impression. I don't think something of this, this size and nature, a new, you know, a new idea like this would come to fruition without the council at least hearing a presentation on it. You know, it is, it's more than just, you know, putting a new couple of umbrellas at Kiwanis. This is a little bit bigger project than that. So I, I think we would want to hear about it and I think we will.
But I think it'd work good at Kiwanis because you've also got all the, you know, the 440 electrical power to run all the equipment.
Yeah, the committee, the committee will talk about it, but there was several different locations looked at. So they'll, they'll get into that, I'm sure.
I bring it up because, you know, we're, we're moving into winter, time is of the essence. And, you know, it's something people are talking about in town. So I just wanted to find out whether the town council had any appetite. And you're right, we'd always love to hear a presentation whenever they're ready, but I wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to be a hurdle. I think that they should go full speed ahead and run their tests and work that out with Parks and Rec. And I'm sure Parks and Rec will make the right decisions on running tests.
And everybody should know that they're soliciting financial support.
Okay. And how would I know that? We're, we're on the town website? New Canaan Athletic Foundation?
Very soon, in the next week or so. They just purchased the equipment on the 13th with, with funds that had been donated in the past. So they're getting it all together now. And I'm sure you'll see it everywhere. You'll, you'll all know about it.
But actually a check can be sent to the New Canaan Athletic Foundation.
Yes, this is true.
Great. Okay. And that leaves us with
John, can I add something to that? That's zoning related?
Yes.
To the committee report. Just asking if this is something, you know, the town council is involved with, that the planning and zoning voted to change zoning on two properties, eight and 10 Houston Lane. So they're changing it. They voted to change it to, I guess someone put in a proposal to build 12 residential units and some commercial space. And then on October 27th, they voted on it and they approved to change the zone of eight and 10 to retail B. So just FYI.
Why? Is there going to be retail in addition to those 12 housing units?
I think they want to make space for, yeah, something small, but that was, there was some concern about that expanding. Not be really bad possibility of it expanding. So I, I'm not exactly sure. 315 square feet of commercial space. So I'm not sure what would go in there.
Why do you think that's a, an issue for the town council?
Change in zoning?
I don't know. Do we have a lawyer? Mike Morrow, do we have a lawyer in the house? I don't think that's a town council I think all of the P and Z's power comes from the state and zoning issues are entirely their, their decision.
So maybe it'll just come up if it involves or impacts the budget somehow.
Or town land? Or is in violation of any of our laws?
Yeah. I mean, that's all set by state statute, isn't it? So I don't know how much input we really have or influence we have over that. We can't do anything to change that, what, what the statutes require.
No, I didn't, I didn't want to change it. I'm just, it's an FYI.
No, but anything that upsets the citizens is probably something we should talk about, but I don't see a, a, a way to influence P and Z. So if, if you want to influence that decision, it has to be done with P and Z. Okay. And that leaves us to public safety, Liz and Mike.
All right. Got anything?
Just a couple of quick updates for the fire. We have a new fire marshal, Paul Kane. So that's great news. He worked for the building department. so that's great news, he worked for the Building Department, took his licensing for fire marshals a while back, he's been the assistant fire marshal, so we're real happy that he's now posted up in that position, keeping the town safe. The Fire Department had continued great average response time, they shaved over a minute off last month's time, so that's fantastic. Their engine number one is out of service, getting repaired, other than that, I think it's pretty quiet at the Fire Department. As for police, right now, they're doing well with their budget, they're under budget where they, where they would, where they are right now. Car thefts are way up as of, compared to this time last year, I'm sure we've all been reading in the paper about the incidences that are occurring, of people leaving the cars unlocked, leaving their keys in there, so there are apparently three different crews that are working in Connecticut and working New Canaan, well, one of the crews, I think the chief said is from out of state, so that's kind of a new development, one of the cars that was stolen was recovered in Newark, so the chief, you know, wants to remind everybody out there, lock your car doors, keep keys out of your car, all valuables out of your car, especially if it's out in the driveway. And another thing that happens too, is when people leave the cars in their driveway, and the car unlocked, if they can get access to the garage door opener, they'll open the garage door and come into your house, so just be careful of that. So that's one major area the chief wants the town to be mindful of. I mentioned last report about the extra work dollar amount that's out on the street, so to speak, was about 250K, now it's at 300,000, a little bit over 300,000, it's more than 60 days due, so that's a large chunk of money for the town, so the chief has spoken with Linda about, you know, increasing the effort to collect that, I think a large portion of it is from Eversource, but, you know, it's over 60 days on the aging report, and that's, it's a long time, and that's a lot of money. Also, there's about 10,000 in false alarm penalty money that's out there, that's definitely very old, and something should be done to collect that, and the chief's working with the, with Linda on that. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, if there's nothing further, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mark's motion, Mike's second, Steve's on board.
Hey, happy and safe Thanksgiving to everybody.
Everybody, sure.
To. Happy Thanksgiving.
No college, no, no fragging with college kids out there. Don't fraternize them, all right?
The meeting is adjourned.
Bye. Good day.
At 8:35.